Got it.
Thanks, Paul.
It being 6:30, I've called to order the meeting of the Oregon School District Board of Education. Today is Monday, September 29th, 2019. I kind of wish the month had gone back to the way today went. You know, we're at the Oregon High School Innovation Center. Could you call the roll?
Ms. Vini?
Present.
Ms. Oderico?
Here.
Ms. Flanigan?
Here.
Mr. Pinkerts?
Here.
Ms. Bijak? Mr. Lebrun?
Here.
Mr. Zack?
Present. The board has a quorum, and Ms. Bijak had let us know that she is attending open back-to-school night, so she will be here when that's concluded. I have proof that the board, the meeting has been appropriately noticed under Wisconsin Open Meetings Law. And then if any, if anyone wants to inspect that notice, it will be with Ms. Heights. And we are not using our regular camera or audio system to go out in the community on OCA, so we're going to speak out and use our mics and audience will not burst into spontaneous cheers and applause or boos so that we can make sure we're picked up over the air. So are you guys picking us up okay on audio? Terrific. I put down president's address. And this isn't something that I intend to do often or even infrequently, but I felt it was appropriate to make a couple of comments at this time, just reflecting on our discussion a couple of weeks ago and how I think that ties in with what we're going to do in the future. But first of all, I'd like to thank all those people who came and spoke to the board very eloquently, very passionately, but in a reasoned and orderly manner to give us insight into our district and what they value in our district. And it struck me that every time we reach out to our community to talk about values and see what they value, they uniformly come back to us with a strong consensus about what this community values in education and the relationships. And every time that we've done that in our 2020 conferences, task force, it's relationships that they talk about, that they value, and that those relationships that we develop matter and distinguish us as a school district. And that's been uniform in my presence here. I was particularly struck by, you know, our senior in high school, Magdalena Edwards. And I went back and listened to her comments again the last couple of weeks and wrote down a couple of things that she said. They could, there's repeating. When we are talking about safety of students, we are talking about the community we are raising them in. We're not talking about punitive actions. And this struck strong. The first step in keeping students safe is creating a strong unified culture. Again, that theme of relationships that came up. At our 2020 conference of, I think, was it 2016? 2015? The community, we asked them to develop what they valued in our school district, and we came up with our value statement, relevant and empowering learning relationships and experiences, educational equity, strong community and family relationships, caring and professional educators, emphasis on the whole child. Each one of those factors are a relationship component or a culture component. That takes me to the second thing that happened in the last couple of weeks. Our youngest daughter, Maureen, married a young man from Bolivia, who, and they're living here in the area, and they're both in grad school. And Fred, our son-in-law, has a brother named Alejandro, who is going to be a senior in high school in Bolivia. And we worked it out so that during his summer break, which happens to be in November, December, he decided to finish his junior year two months early so that he could come over to the United States and live with us, so that he could experience a little bit of American culture and to improve his English. And so we're lucky to be hosting Alejandro through Christmas. And it's been a great experience so far. And we got him launched off to school last week in a little bit worried for him and seeing how he was going to adopt, coming in without a formal program. But the first day he came back and we asked him, "How was it going?" And he said, "It's terrific." And he said that they had a mentor set up with him. And I said, "Is that just you because you're from another country?" He said, "No, it seems like the first-year students or people who are new in the district get mentors, and they have somebody to escort them around school and introduce them to folks." And so Fred and all of our new students in this district had mentors. And I worked with Mike Carr and the soccer coaches to try to facilitate a way in which Alejandro, because he isn't here on a formal exchange program, could at least get integrated into the soccer program. And Mike went above and beyond as well as Chris to be able to get Alejandro authorized to practice with the team. So he's got a group there. And I saw Jim, I was dropping Alejandro off at the door, and Jim Pliner was there greeting all of our students as they walked into school during last week and saw Alejandro and had a great exchange with him. You know, that speaks really loudly to not only Alejandro, but all the kids and all the parents in our district about relationships. And what Alejandro has experienced as we talked to him is it's not only our adults who are acting that way in the school, but all of the students. I mean, he's got more people on Snapchat and Pinterest and whatever they use now. Friends, I mean, you know, I asked him who the male friends are. He doesn't remember their names, but he seems to remember all the female names. So we reported that back to his mom and dad in Bolivia. And then he went to the football game on Saturday and just had a blast, or on Friday, and just had a blast here at Oregon. He was just blown away by how many friends he had. We went to a party last night with friends, and there was a student from Oregon High School that he knew. And so they sat down, and last night he was out a little past his curfew, going to Oproio and then driving around listening to music. And room five was on the playlist, I guess. So all that is meant to say is relationships and relationship building is really strong in this district, at least from my perspective, now having a student back in after having been an empty nester for all these years. That speaks again, I mean, it's a kind of a reinforcement of what we heard two weeks ago about relationship buildings. And that takes us to our apple, which again is relationship stuff. And it struck me that the strengths of that apple and all five of those pieces isn't that they're only effective when they're together and we bind them together. And what we heard from the citizens who came here and what I'm seeing through Alejandro is that they're not bound together intrinsically from the outside, from punitive measures or enforcement measures. We're not forcing culture or relationship on. That can only be, those components can only be pulled together intrinsically. And that's by creating relationships and cultures. And so we've got a number of decisions to make. And we're on the path forward as we go through. Level five of the Rickle Ball book is all about self and relationships. Daniel Pink, which we reviewed over time, talks about autonomy, purpose, and mastery. That's all about culture and relationship. And so when we think about issues that we've had and for where to come, it's, you know, in the case of safety, are we made safer by external controls? Or is there a cost with them to the relationships that we're trying to build in the culture? And that was the question we had last week. It's questions we've had in the past with curriculum and assessment. We're going to have those questions again. On the path forward, when we talk about what we want as our district and what we want it to look like, I think it bears us in mind, or we should bear in mind, what we heard last week or two weeks ago from our community, that relationships matter. What I saw with Alejandro and which you folks who have students in school know, that relationships are the key. And as we go forward, that we need to keep an eye on developing those as opposed to maybe other techniques. So thanks for bearing with me, but I thought it was worth, as I was thinking about that and trying to pull it together, to reflect on that. So that takes us to our agenda. And it's the consent calendar. Is there any item on the consent calendar that any board member wishes to remove? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Ms. Vini, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Pinkerts? All those in favor, why don't we, we got some, I think we got some staff assignments on there, so why don't we call the roll? Oh, it's okay. We didn't approve the agenda, so I'm going to back that up. You're going to hold, it's a parliamentary procedure. President gets to hold that motion to go back and correct a procedural approval. So we need a motion to entertain or to approve the agenda as posted.
I'm of approval of the agenda.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now that we have an agenda, we have a motion on the table to approve the consent calendar. And would you call the roll on that?
Ms. Vini?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerts?
Yes.
Ms. Oderico?
Yes.
Ms. Flanigan?
Yes.
Mr. Lebrun?
Yes.
Mr. Zack?
Yes. The consent calendar items are approved. Communication for the public board, Policy 180.04, provides an opportunity for the public to address the board. Did we have anybody registered? Is there anyone in the audience? Once, twice, three times, we'll move on. Informational items. First item is C1, Nate Yerhan, come on up. This is Nate Mendel. Nate is the director of the Performing Arts Center. And as you heard three weeks ago, I bragged about Nate and the PAC and the sound and when I was talking about the production of Titanic because it was the best sound I've ever heard in the PAC. And Nate, at one point in time, had 30-plus mics going during Titanic, which I can't imagine how he did that. But you have now transformed the PAC into one of the best-sounding auditoriums in Dane County. But Nate, in addition to being a sound wizard, has other things going on at the PAC. And I wanted to invite him to let us know and also the public about what he's got planned. So Nate, the floor is yours.
Thank you for that really generous introduction. And I am thrilled to be here, so thank you for a little bit of your time. I'm the Performing Arts Center Director and a former professional performer, record producer, small business owner. And for those of you that I haven't had the opportunity to meet yet, I came on board with the Oregon School District just over a year ago, and I wanted to touch base and give a quick update regarding our theater and our current offerings and some new exciting things that we have going forward. As a former performer, I'm going to read from my notes here because otherwise I'll go off-script and take way too long. So recent updates, and some of these are before I got here, include a new sound system that exceeds Broadway specifications in terms of what would be usable. That was a couple of years ago. A new stage floor and new flooring in the orchestra pit. And then this summer, new HD backstage video monitoring system so that in all the rooms backstage, you have a high-definition image of what's happening on the stage for the performers. And also this summer, thanks to a wonderful grant, we got LED stage lighting package that, according to the folks at Focus on Energy, will save approximately 165,000 kilowatt-hours of energy consumption per year, which is on the order of 35 households. Pretty awesome. In the past 365 days, the PAC has been used for 312 events. Of those 312 events, that includes all rehearsals, when classes come in there, that sort of thing. 91 of those events were open to the public with an estimated total audience size of just over 26,000 people coming through those doors in the last year. So that's wonderful. That's a good testament to the community, especially since it's a 23-year-old space at this time. But with all those improvements, it feels like new to a lot of the people that come through. So I've been thrilled with the progress that we've been making during the last year here. And for those that don't know me or can't tell yet, I'm incredibly passionate about advocacy for the arts within our society, the positive role that music and performance can play within communities, which leads me to the major project that I've been spearheading and here to talk to you about today, hoping that I can get as much community support as I can possibly find over the next little while. And that is the Spotlight Headliners Series. It's a professional concert series focused at providing high-quality professional entertainment to everyone in our community at an affordable cost. So these are similar-quality shows that you might expect to see in a place like Overture Hall, except here, the student tickets are always 10 bucks, and the adult tickets are 20 bucks, and the senior tickets are 18 bucks. So this year, we have three shows, two in the spring and one coming up in about five weeks on October 12th. And that is the debut of the Spotlight Headliners Series. And so I really, everything that I've seen of the Oregon community, and I've performed here many years in the past. Chen Yancy would have my group come by every couple of years, is that this is a community that will embrace and support the arts. And that's where I'm hoping that perhaps there will be some people that start to hear about this and want to kind of help out where they can and encourage people to take a chance on this great, high-energy, family-friendly entertainment that we're bringing in. Now, I told Andy at the district office that if we lose money in our first year, then we will just consider this an interesting experiment and never do it again. So I'm really kind of counting on getting like 500 people to each of the shows. That's my goal, just throw that out there. I just wanted to talk about the first show a little bit. Well, I've personally worked with, in my past life, all of the performers that are coming for these, for the series. And coming up next month is Jane Powell and her three-piece band. I met Jane at Oprah Winfrey's 55th birthday party, where she was hired as the headline entertainer. And her interaction with the audience was something that I just marveled at. And I thought, you know, if I'm ever in the position, we've got to get Jane. The NACA, the National Association for Campus Activities, has awarded her more awards than anybody else in the history of that organization. And she's just phenomenal. Anyway, I don't want to take up your time with that. Not only does the Spotlight Headliners Series help to benefit the community by bringing people together in an uplifting way, creating a great date night, but it also benefits our students here by giving them exclusive access to clinics, meet-and-greets, and Q&amp;As with these professional performers. And so they're going to have an opportunity to do that. And I think that there are about 50 people in one of the ensembles that will be an opening act for the show as well. So they get those pretty sweet opportunities. So I'm leaving a bit of information over there about the series in the hopes that, you know, you might know someone who's in a position to help. You might know someone who's able to help us kind of spread the word. It's a new thing that we haven't had before. It's easy to underestimate kind of the scope of, in my opinion, just how awesome this is. And so I'm just hoping that people can help do what they can to build up a buzz. That would be wonderful. And season tickets for all three shows can be purchased at a 15% discount up until the first show on October 12th. So I just say, thanks again. Please don't hesitate to reach out with any thoughts or questions or ideas that you might have, and I appreciate your time. Thanks for inviting me.
Any board member have any questions for Nate?
Just one question.
Yeah.
Nate, would you be looking for sponsors for this program, essentially? You know, community partners?
Absolutely. And we've reached out to several communities, and some financial donations have come in. That is always a great benefit. And on the letter actually that I left over there, which I just wrote to, dear community member for this case, there's actually a list of things on the back between talking it up. If you want to give a financial donation, you can from the Performing Arts Center's new website. But it doesn't have to be a financial sponsor. You know, I was also thinking about businesses that might be willing to take. We have, due to a convenient printing error, we ended up with about 9,000 of these brochures for free, which is terrific. And we also have business cards for each of the shows that just have each show information on them. So that, you know, for example, if there is a small business in town that felt comfortable giving those business cards with every receipt or that kind of thing, that, I think, would go as far as, let me put it this way. Money's always great, but I think until the word kind of gets out about what this is, just kind of generating the buzz is the biggest thing that would really be helpful. Thank you.
Nate, I know that you had reached out to some of the service clubs in the area as well. I came to our Optimus Club this past week.
Fantastic.
And so this is actually the third time I've heard about you and what you're trying to create out of the Performing Arts Center. And so the buzz is beginning, trust me.
I'm so happy to hear that. Thank you.
I saw a loop of, Nate had created a video loop of the acts, and I saw it about 1,800 times because I was out in front of the house and it was out in front of the show for Titanic. But the acts he's got coming in are fantastic. So October 12th is the first one.
That is correct.
Not only buy tickets, but talk to people who are coming because it'd be a great series.
Jane has a five-octave range. She's been performing for 40 years, and she's coming out of what might be considered semi-retirement. She stopped touring full-time to be with her grandkids more often. And she's coming out of semi-retirement to do this show. So it's pretty exciting that way, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
OEA report, I don't see anyone here. Student report, we've got two students on board, and Jim and I are linking up with them, and they'll be at our next meeting. Right? That takes us to action items D. D1, preliminary budget. This is the board's take at the 2019-2020 budget to approve so that we can publish that for the annual meeting, which is coming up in two weeks. So Andy, I believe the floor is yours.
Well, it's a little hard to follow that, but we'll try with numbers. Go ahead.
Maybe if you sing them.
I can try. That would shorten the meeting, I'm sure.
Five octaves.
Five octaves. I don't even know what an octave is. We'll only make it three of them. I think I'm changing five octaves in color. All right. So wanted to briefly just talk about the budget process here. What we're doing tonight is just approving basically an advertisement that will be in the paper to advertise what's called the budget hearing. It's a Type 1 notice, has to be in the Observer a few days, a week or so before the budget hearing, which will be held on the annual meeting. We don't know everything yet. We're still gathering information. I kind of talk about the things that we don't know. Still trying to count the kids and track those folks down, even though we've had a week of school already. As well as, we don't have things like the state aid formula certification, which happens on October 15th, and as well as the equalized success value, which typically happens at the end of September or October 1st. So this is kind of just our first guess. The good, at the budget, guess is probably a wrong word, but our first estimate at the budget. We are working through that process, and we will then adjust the budget in the end of October, once everything is known. So this is just a normal process that we do each year. And the hearing will, I'll give you more of a lengthy presentation as well as talk about the performance from last year of our financial system. So little precursor, last year, basically our fund balance and general funds about the same as it was last year. The big changes, we're actually in what's called our reserved fund balance. We basically took that down by about a half million dollars. And our unreserved debt, our general fund balance went up a half million dollars. So all good there. We're starting to spend down some of those funds. Good portion of that money was reserved last year for the pool project that we did. So bathrooms and the anticipation for the splash pad, maintenance room, those types of things. That was a good portion, almost half of that $500,000 that we spent down in fund balance last year. So I'm going to just kind of give a real high overview of what's going on here. This is, board members that have been around for a while, my favorite sheet because it kind of at a very high level shares what's going on in the different funds in the district. And tells you kind of from a left side where our fund balances are, based on July 1st, 2019. And then tells you just very high level what our revenues are anticipated to be, our expenditures, and then the case of special education and education fund, the transfer that has to happen between those funds. So I'm just going to quickly go through those. You see that, I will tell you right from the get-go that we are balanced except for what we're spending for the reserve functions. So if you were to add the assigned functions on the left-hand side, if you were to add the 306, 746, and building carryover, 466, 390, and the rest of the numbers in that column, you would come up to 1.441,529, which is the number on the far right side. So all we're doing is showing that theoretically, if all the buildings spent their carryover, the departments spent their carryover, et cetera, we would have the fund balance go down by 1.4 million dollars. That's how we allow them to basically spend their carryover. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. So other than that, other than those carryovers, we are balanced. And anticipate, still being balanced in October when we get all of our information down. After the Fund 10, we basically have our gifts and donations fund. We anticipate having that level. Really no real control of that, depends on what's going on. I will tell you that there are some new GASB rulings, Governmental Accounting Standards Bureau, which were, in the past, a lot of the transactions that happened in Fund 21 were actually student activities. They have recently reviewed their guidance and basically said more of our student activities should be in that fund, based on our interpretation of what they're saying. So for instance, class accounts, prom accounts. In the past, we've kept them in the student activity area, which is in Fund 60s. And we're going to be moving that into Fund 20s. Probably not now, but probably, it's not in there now, but we'll be moving in there in October. Special education's fairly self-explanatory, Fund 27. Obviously, there's a transfer that happens between Fund 10. You can see that, 5.4 million dollars, simply because special education funding sources do not match what their expenditures are. This has always been a transfer that's taken place in the district. Non-referendum debt, Fund 38, a small deficit there, that's planned. There's enough money in the balance to cover for that deficit. It's just basically how the debt service schedule lined up. So no worries there for that $5,000 reduction. Debt service, same thing there. Actually, what happened there is we were given premiums on the bonds that we sold. So the people that bid on our bonds actually gave us more money than what we needed and basically kind of subsidized the interest rate. So they're going to get 5% of their bonds for a number of years. They gave us the money to compensate for that so that they could get a 5% return on their money. But they gave it to us upfront, so we make that first payment now, 2.6 million dollars. No worries, we already had that extra money in our fund balance and debt service. So not a problem. You'll see that our balance at the end of the year is 120,000. That's a normal amount of money to have until we need to make our next payments. Revenue bonds, so this is from last year, I'm sorry, from 2014. We're just basically still spunding down the funds that we had accumulated for the 2014 projects. We finally got our last architectural bill that's paid. And so now we just have a little bit of reserve that we'll be going through and spending that last $35,000. 2018 bonds are obviously what we approved, was approved in 2018. The bonds were sold in, bid out in January of 2019. That's the money that's remaining on those. We had some large purchases right away. So we only had $38 million left at July. Plus, we've had obviously some bills from Fendorf as we've been constructing the new elementary school. Food service shows a little bit of a balance. We had a little bit of balance this year. We anticipate having a little bit of a balance at the end of this next year as well. That's simply in preparation for when we open the new school. We'll have a fairly significant amount of fixed costs associated with that with some additional students, but not enough to kind of compensate for those fixed costs for a while until that growth kind of catches up with us. So we really want to have a little bit of extra revenue in that fund so that we can hopefully start the year 2020, 21 with a balance at the end of the year. Employer trust funds and the OPEB fund, that's just kind of our best estimate, what's happening with those funds. We try to kind of just estimate based on the retirees that are in those funds, what's going to happen there. But what the trust fund is completely dependent on how our retirees utilize those funds. And our best guess... and our best guess as to how they're using them. So you see a small reduction there, about $25,000. And then you see an increase in the OPEB Fund. We've been trying to build that over time. So right now, we show about a $220,000 increase. Community Ed Funds, those are the next four funds. The Pool, Community Ed, Performing Arts Funds. Those are all grouped as Community Ed Funds in EPI's vernacular. New law passed a couple of years ago on a budget bill requires that to have a zero balance at the end of the year. We never hit that perfectly, but last year, we were within $404, so that's pretty darn good. Now, there's some fund differentials there between the different funds, but overall, $404 is awesome. So that's where that is. And then Cooperative Purchase Fund. Again, that's a fund that's supposed to be zero at the end of the year. We basically work with other districts for Carl Perkins and the Badger Conference. Both of those are in there. And whatever we receive, we spend as those groups require. So if there's no questions with that, I want to share one other interesting thing that's happening with the budget that I did allude to in the agenda item, but I just wanted to see if there's any questions on this page. See, none. I'm going to continue then. So Steve probably remembers this because we've been together for a while. But I have always...
You've been predicting it all the time.
Been worried, and worried is the wrong word. It's not really a bad thing. It's just a thing that's going to, that eventually happen. This is the State Aid Formula. I apologize. There's a lot of numbers on it. We're going to focus your attention right on the bottom, well, not bottom, kind of mid-right side here. There's a number that says tertiary equalization area aid of negative $10,835.84. What this means is that we've gotten from a point in our district where, I'm going to focus your attention on another number, where our equalization dollars per student, in other words, what our property values are, and you divide those property values by the number of students we have, have exceeded what's the tertiary guarantee from the state of Wisconsin. So we are at a number called 622201. Kind of got my cursor on it on the page here. That's that number, the value per number. And then if you look up here, 621410 is what the state of Wisconsin, that's the tertiary number up in the box on the right-hand side. We are slightly over that by approximately $800. That has been required, or turned us into a negative tertiary district, which basically means we'll start losing some revenue because the state, the State Aid Formula views us as more wealthy from a property tax, from a property assessed values situation. We, we in McFarland, I think, are the, are the last two districts in Dane County that are in that situation. Everybody else is significantly negative tertiary. What I think pushed us in that direction was we had a TIF district in the Village of Oregon that came out. It was over a $20 million increment that came back onto the tax rolls. It was funding other projects for the village over the years. And when that came out, you divided that by our number of students that we have and the membership, that just bumped us up to slightly over the amount that the state had in the State Aid Formula. So not something that we have to worry about. It's just something that I kind of thought would happen. I actually thought it would happen sooner than it did, but it finally happened, and it just basically means as we go on, our amount of state aid is going to kind of reduce, and our property levy, our property taxes will increase to compensate for that because we're more wealthy than what many districts, or what the state formula would say would require tertiary aid. So in the past, we've gotten maybe 2% more of our spending because we were in that tertiary aid, that positive tertiary aid area. Now, we're going to start losing a little bit of that aid. Does that make sense? It's a fairly complicated issue, but I just wanted to mention it.
Do you have a sense of in percent what that's going to drive in terms of a flip between property taxes versus state aid?
You know, I'd say we're going to be closer to, you know, 40% state aid, 60% property taxes, but that's just a guess without putting some pencil to it.
And what are we at now?
In the past, we've been 50/50. I mean, if you go back a number of years, we were 50/50. But we went heading in that direction for a while.
Right.
It's just that now we're just going to start going down the other way. So I'm actually doing, was working on a presentation last night, and let's see if I can recover the numbers. Like Madison gets not twice as much. I think they're in the $36 million aid, the general aid formula, and they're at 25,000 or 27,000 students in membership. We're at 4,000 almost in membership, and we're at 20, almost 21 million. So that gives you a feel. Madison is significantly, has significantly more assessed value per student than we do, though. They're like, I think, around a million dollars rather than the 620 that we're at. So it kind of gives you a feel for what's, what other districts are.
As we add students?
That could change the equation.
We would flip back.
Right.
Okay.
It could change back if we start, if we get the growth that we're projecting. It very well could. The race that's on there, obviously, is as those homes come on and what value those homes are, and the ratio of students in those homes. It's just hard to predict. It also is hard to predict how much money the state puts into the State Aid Formula because that's a key factor as to what those numbers are.
So you ready for questions if we have any?
You bet.
No, that was my question about...
Okay. Anything from you, Troy?
I guess the one question, maybe this isn't the time to talk about it, but I'm just kind of curious about open enrollment and the impact that that will have, you know, knowing that we get less revenue for open enrollment students than we do for our own in-district students. So as our new building comes online next year, and we've really cranked down the open enrollment, what, could you just talk a little bit about how that'll play into decisions that we'll have to make regarding open enrollment with the budget and having some access capacity at the elementary grade levels for some period of time?
Yeah. That's an interesting concept, right? Because first thing you have to remember is, from a state aid, from a revenue limit perspective, you have a three-year average before you have the full amount of money related to those kids. So I can, oops, move to the revenue limit formula, which is right here. And, you know, next year, we're slated to get about $11,122 is our maximum amount of revenue that we can receive. So if you take a third of that as we have growth, the first year, you get a third of that, the second year, you get a third of that. It takes almost two years under the revenue limit formula to get the same amount of money that an open enrollment student gives you the first year. The third year, you're positive from a resident. But what's just interesting is, the first year that you have an open enrollment student, you're good. You're in the $7,000 range. It starts revenue right then. So it kind of cuts both ways a little bit, but definitely from a long-term perspective, it's better to have them as residents because you get that full amount eventually. So it really is what we want to do. I think you're right in anticipating that a lot of students that are around the new elementary school from other districts are going to want to come to it, and we will have room, at least for the short term. So for the most part, I think that's a discussion that we're going to really have to get into and think through when we figure out how many slots we have available in January. Troy, does that kind of give you at least some...
Yeah, thank you. No, that's helpful to think back about the three-year rolling average of how that comes online, so. The other question I had, I guess, is regarding the Fund 70s, and specifically 74. And I guess, just kind of looking back from last year's history, that our expenditures and our revenues changed from our budget. So could you just talk a little bit of how those decisions are made and why that, why that changes over the course of the year?
Sure. So you're looking at the expenditure side?
I guess I'd notice that both, both are varied from what we predict them to be.
And you said Fund 73 or 74?
74.
74. Okay, so how 74 is budgeted is, we budget the, basically, whatever it takes, whatever anticipated need is from our retirees. So with our four-year health insurance benefit as people retire, we budget that amount. So we anticipate, you know, okay, we got eight months from this person, and then they roll off, nine months from this person. Come up with a dollar amount based on that. And then we add $300,000, I think is the number. It's been a while since I've looked at this budget, but $300,000. And that money is basically used for the purpose of paying for sick leave conversion amounts. So when a retiree leaves us, if they've been here for longer than 10 years, they take whatever their sick leave is, and there's a conversion factor. 10 years, it's 1 to 5. 15 years, it's 1 to 4, et cetera. And then times their daily pay. And it's a payment that's either, we decide whether it goes into the trust fund, which is the fund right next to it, or it's paid into a 403D or 401A for the retiree. Whatever's left after that amount is paid, then we kick into the OPEB Fund. So we don't actually know what the expenditure is going to be until those retirees retire, and then we do the calculations to figure out how much is there. So it's kind of a, it's a, it was a way for us to figure out a number to budget there and still make contributions to OPEB. It will vary based on how many people retire in any particular year, as well as what their balances are. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I mean, so do you, do we ever consider a situation where you have a high number of retirees in a year that would swing that?
Sure, as far as a budget perspective? We would if we knew. We just, nobody really likes telling us until January, February, or March, or sometimes later. So that's, that's in lies...
I guess I just, I didn't know if we, you know, just from a workforce perspective, if we have an understanding of if there's going to be a peak or valley in that.
Yeah, we don't really have, the only way that we could do that is just look at age and try to anticipate when people are going to retire.
Which isn't a good indicator.
No, no. We've tried to encourage, and Gina's done some different things to try to encourage people to give us heads up. But again, those heads up are more from a higher perspective than when we're setting the budget back in September, October. So the idea is, we'd really like to know so we can get out in the market and get a great replacement for you, but not necessarily what we can budget. What I can tell you is that $300,000 over time has almost always covered. At times, it's come close.
Yeah, so I mean, with that explanation, considering all the variables we've done, like last year, we were pretty close, considering.
Right, yeah. And the other thing I'll share with you is, in order for us to get aid on the payments that we put into the OPEB liability account, Fund 74, the one we're talking about here, we have to put in 5% more than our, it's called our ARC, which is basically an amortization schedule of what the actuary says we need to put into the fund in order to meet that liability at some point in time, or the, or the amortization. I don't remember the amortization schedule off the top of my head right now, but basically, DCA requires us to try to chop away at that liability about. So we always have to put in that amount of money in order to make sure that our contributions to the fund are funded from a perspective of categorical aid. So it's mostly special needs staff that we then get a categorical rule revenues for us if we, if we get on that. But in order to get that, we have to put in an extra 5% of those. A little detail.
Thank you.
You bet.
Hi, Anna. Welcome.
Hi.
I was back to school, Nate.
Awesome.
Cool. We were talking about the budget. I don't know if you had any questions from your go-through or not.
Uh, no, actually, I didn't have any questions.
Good. Tim?
The, the school that is going up in Pittsburgh, obviously, it seems to be well on track. We got started early enough. The rest of the development, however, doesn't seem to be as on track as we are with our school. Was that an expectation? Obviously, we've got debt payments coming up that are scheduled already, so we know that's going to happen because we're spending the money.
Yep.
But we likely won't have any assessable properties this year, which will drive revenues next year. Is that going to run us into any trouble for debt payments?
Not for debt payments. I don't think so. I think we should be okay. We are seeing revenue growth, I'm sorry, assessed value growth. That's fairly decent, projecting 6%. It'll probably be a little bit higher than that. Could approach 7%. So I don't think that would be a concern. The bigger concern is just when those students are going to show up. That's, that's the biggest thing. And obviously, with the homes there, we're not sure when those students are going to show up. I have gotten a text message from the developer a couple of weeks ago that says, "I think they're doing a groundbreaking type of thing in early in October." So I think they're on track now, but yeah, he's probably a little bit later than you want it to be. We've kind of known that, to be honest with you, as we were working through the process to build the elementary school and some of the early permit processes we had to go, we were actually attending these subdivisions, the developers' meetings with the village, with the city of Pittsburgh. And so it's pretty apparent that the improvements, the physical improvements weren't going to be done until October. So, and they weren't going to let you have a building permit until those physical improvements were done.
Right.
For several months now, we anticipated that homes would probably not be, there won't be a ton of homes in there, probably until, you know, you're going to start seeing a lot more basements probably in the spring, I guess.
Sure, sure. And so those properties will end the year with lot value assessments as opposed to finished value assessments.
Right, and the only day that really matters to us in that world is January 1st because all assessments are based on January 1st. So it will be a, kind of a year out before that happens.
Okay.
Now, I would say that, and I haven't looked in, like, Access Dane, I'd say that those properties, probably the ones that are, you know, kind of, they're setting up and stuff, probably have some value to the things, which is one of the reasons why Phil wanted us to buy the property before January 1st is because there's some value to it. So we'll be getting some revenue from that, but unfortunately, the developer's going to be paying that.
Sure.
But it's not crop mined anymore, I don't think.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you. You bet.
Yeah, I ran the, I looked at the Roffers projections, and the solid number that we have is the 2020, 2021 number, and we're tracking behind that this year. And so I think you're probably going to have to compare 2021, 22 numbers because I think we probably have a year lag on that, just when that came on.
But the debt won't wait.
No, no, but we have the revenue for that, too, through the, yeah.
Okay.
So, but I've got the stuff. I've got it pegged with the Roffers report and where we're going, you know, and the developments on the west side of Oregon are just coming in. Their houses just starting to pop there. That's a little bit behind. And then on the south side of Oregon, that's in, over by you now.
Yep, lots of lots up there right now.
I mean, there are lots all over Oregon now, just banging up, so. Okay, Bart?
So our estimates for staffing costs are based on, perhaps, those earlier, more optimistic projections of when the houses would be completed and sold. So possibly, our staff costs are going to be a little bit lower next year.
Oh, for the start of the new school?
Right.
Yeah. Leslie and I have been having lots of discussions about that, like how many sections they'll open up and those types of things. And, you know, we don't have an answer right now. But definitely, I think a lot of the students that are going to be in the new elementary school are going to come from students that are in our district right now. We will not fill the building up, though, obviously, because we anticipate that that subdivision's going to go pretty quick once October comes around. So I don't know, we haven't gotten to this point in time, but I think one of the things we'll be analyzing is, with the override, do we need all the money next year? That's a question, I think, that we'll have to contemplate and see how we use that. We don't have an answer for it yet. But that's, we got one more year on that.
I mean, the one, I've got some preliminary numbers. And at 5, 6 level, we're going to be about 640, 650, and that's really, really crowded at that building. You know, it's pushing the limit of that building, so. While we might not be at capacity at the new building at the lower levels, you know, that building's going to get us out of a really crowded situation at our CI.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Krista?
My question is about carryover funds. In terms of, I understand the concept in that we don't want to use reoccurring expenses for building carryover, but we've had a kind of a three-year trend that's accelerating in terms of how much money we have in carryover funds. So I guess my question is, as we look at budgeting each year, are there things that we could be looking at, knowing that... that we could be looking at knowing that a three-year trend has gone from 225,000 in carryover to 257, now 303,000, that we could be looking at a budgeting? When we budget, are there things that are one-time expenses or could be a small reoccurring expense that we could allocate that money knowing we've got trends of carryover each year?
Are you specifically looking at the building carryover?
Yeah, because what you said with departmental is those are allocated funds where building carryover is not. And so I guess what I'm, or not necessarily allocated, it's just unspent funds.
Correct. Um, yeah. I would say that, I would say that we've been kind of, how do I say? We've been using the building funds, putting a little bit more pressure, I guess you would say, on them. For instance, this is our second year for the Chromebook replacement program that we put in place. I think if you ask the building principals, that is making them tighter with their dollars than they had to be in the past. And the other thing that we did this year was we were funding some extracurriculars. We all agreed that we would help to do that. So we have been trying to move some things and basically take some funds and reallocate them from the buildings in order to kind of stop that increase in their fund balances, or their carryovers.
Yeah, I, I understand. I guess what I'm just asking from a board level and a planning level is we look at priorities when we look at the budget, you know, first level priority, second level, third. If we should be also considering knowing that we tend to have a trend of 200 to 250,000 in carryover, that those are things that can come before the board and we could look at planning some of those, or looking at more one-time expenditures because although it's a, you know, a small percentage of the budget, that can mean a lot in mental health or some other areas. So it's just something to think about or for the board to consider in the future.
I will share with you just real quickly that I have asked the building principals this year, and I haven't done this in the past, to give rationale for why the carryover is. And I was anticipating not sharing that with you. So that, I anticipate, my expectation is that you've always had plans for that. Perhaps those plans haven't played out, but I thi- I think it's good or fair to ask that question. But, and fair to ask the question you're asking as well.
And we'll revisit that as we move into January because we'll start the budgeting process for 2020, 2021.
That'll be an interesting one.
Yeah, yeah. Have that conversation and, and bring that issue up again. Okay. Good. I just note a couple of things, not a question, but as we go toward the annual meeting, that the projected mill rate is going to be the lowest since 2009 and represents a 23 cent decrease from last year. Now, obviously, that plays off of equalized assessed value, but still, that's a trend that, that our taxpayers should note is that we're going to be lower than any time since 2009 in terms of the mill rate. Another encouraging trend is that our OPEB liability, our long-term post-employment benefit or post-retirement benefits, down from 4.6 million to 2.8 million dollars in that. By reading this right, that our Fund 10 spending increased over last year, and looking at page six, the percentage increase from 2018, 19 is 2.3%.
Sounds about right.
Yeah. You know, and then Fund 10 is our, our operating expense portion of the budget as opposed to the other items that we don't necessarily have a lot of annual control over necessarily, but Fund 10 we do, and that's rising only 2.3%, which is really consistent with inflation in terms of operating expenses. So those are, those are three good trends that I saw as we were reading, as I was reading through the budget. Okay, any other questions of Andy? All right, then we would need a motion to approve the preliminary budget for 2019, 2020 as presented so that, that can then serve as a basis for the publications that need to be done for the annual meeting. Entertain a motion to that effect.
Hold the problem.
Mr. Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Panchar, Andy, Mr. Panchar's with the second. Is there any further discussion? Senior, could you call the role?
Krista, your mic's the one.
Yeah.
Ms. Flynn again?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Ms. Seeny?
Yes.
Ms. Zorico?
Yes.
Mr. Lebrun?
Yes.
Ms. Beja?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes, we have approved preliminary budget for presentation at the annual meeting. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Uh, informational items are going to e on our agenda, opening of the school 2019, 2020. Dr. Wilson?
Board members, what do you have in front of you? And I think the photocopyer may have a couple of those copies, so make sure that every board member gets one. This is a review of the opening of school. August 27th was our first in-service day, and that began as a school day, or in-service at the school level. Then on August 28th was our district in-service. And a special thank you to Krista and Troy. They had the opportunity to attend. And as you look at the agenda on the one side, you can see what we spent time on that morning through about 9:30. And then on the flip side is the building layout for Fourth Elementary School in the district. And you'll notice a couple of leaders on the bottom identifying our school construction process, the naming of the school, the Boundary Task Force, as well as the school staffing plan, which we will get started in November as we begin to place students for next school year. So it was an exciting open, opening of the school morning. I'm curious if Troy and Krista have anything that you would like to share about that.
Really incredible event, I thought. Just really uplifting. The speakers were really great. There was like six staff speakers and then three, three student speakers, but really great message. Just an excellent way to kick off the year. It was a good reminder for me to see all of the people that work in this district in one room, so it was, it was pretty cool. Glad I, glad I was able to attend.
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's really humbling. And I think, you know, at those things, I always think about if our parents could hear our teachers talk about how proud they are to work in this district and how much they mean to each other and just how much they care about our kids and the effort that they put in every day. It's, it's pretty humbling to be a part of this district, and parents really should feel very, very fortunate. And, you know, to the administrators, to the staff that you guys have put together for this district, it's pretty incredible because they are all so, feel so fortunate to be a member of this district.
Okay, unless you have questions, I'm going to keep rolling on the next informational item, and that is the annual meeting. Just a quick update. You might recall, annual meetings are set by state law, and it's a very standard agenda. And that agenda you should have in front of you. I will say there's only one change to the agenda, and that's an addition, and that's the last action item, which is a petition for board reapportionment. Otherwise, it's a very typical standard annual meeting agenda, and we are all set for it, unless you guys have any questions that you have.
Just one question. So is the board reapportionment plan going to be posted online with the agenda?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Any questions of Brian on the annual meeting? Okay. New school update.
And then, and then we'll, next, on the new school update, this is likely something you have seen before. Fendor provides us with a one-page executive summary, and we posted that out on the website so that community members can see our building grow as well. This is the photo from the last one we received, which was August 30th. You'll notice the building is starting to take shape. It has two floors in certain areas. The first area that was completed was the west end of the building with the gymnasium and physical education space and our common space, which is sort of the anchor point of the building from a construction standpoint. And then the contractors started moving east, and they now have virtually all the steel in place for the second academic wing, or the first floor and second academic wing. And they're also laying brick at the very first, on the very first floor closest to the parking lot, which is the kindergarten area. So overall, the weather has been almost near perfect in terms of construction weather. We haven't had those crazy 100-year rains which seem to happen like three times in, in a year. I know that I didn't hex us. No, no, that wasn't a hexing. So, Fendor's feeling comfortable with where we are, you know, contract-wise in terms of, in terms of timeline, and we'll just continue to work on the school with them and their subs. I had a conversation earlier today, another new school update, on our school naming process, which we launched at, at nearly the end of August. So far, we have 86 names for the new school, which, like, none of us made a projection of how many names we have, but 86, we're clearly going to have in the triple-digit amount. And that goes through September 27th. And I'll just say, we really like it when a community member's put, you know, put together a form. Some community members have called me and some have sent an email to me. We've included that in the list because we don't want to miss any opportunity. It's just always a little better if you can put as much information down so we can transform that into the, into the school name as well as the rationale that people have. So I continue to send those in or fill out our form, and we will be back to the board in, in early October. Additionally, the Boundary Task Force, their plan is to come back on October 14th. They're hosting a few focus groups with parents, and Leslie and Andy were telling me today that we have three focus groups scheduled between now and the 14th. And they're going to factor that feedback from our parents into their final recommendation. So look for that. Boundary Task Force recommendation on Monday, October 14th. And then the staffing of the new school. It's a question I addressed right at the first back-to-school in-service because everyone's wondering, when is that going to start? And we're looking to launch that about November 1st. But again, you've, remember, as we're opening a new school, we do not want to open a new school that's overcapacity. Remember back to the 2016 or 2018 referendum, we were, we're overcapacity virtually all of our elementary schools in RCI. We're going to be moving some of those students to the Fourth Elementary School, and we're going to have some capacity. So when the city of Pittsburgh continues to grow, we don't get ourselves back into that overcrowding right away. So if, we're excited about that. I, I wish, I can remember the day when we thought 425 students at RCI was a lot, and now we're at 650. And we know we're going to pick up RCI students through, throughout the year. I'll stop with that and see if you, if you have any questions about the new school update.
Great, thanks, Brian. That's exciting news. At some point, we'll probably try to schedule an opportunity for the board to take a tour. So maybe in a couple of weeks when it's a little bit further along, I'll work with Brian and Katie to send out a doodle poll about when we can go at the end of the date, you know, right at the end of their construction day so that we can have someone there present.
Yeah, and if we pick the date perfectly, along with the weather, we should be able to tour the entire 10-acre parcel.
All right. Good. So I'll keep on a lookout for that Google. Building Bridges report.
I'm going to ask Candace to come forward. Leslie, are you?
Just a little bit.
Okay. Candace and Leslie will give you a quick review of Building Bridges. And in case that name isn't connecting for you, that is the grant that we're using from Dade County to hire some social workers. And I believe this is year two. I got it right? Great, it's year two, and I will turn it over to Candace and Leslie.
Andy, can you put the slide back up?
Uh, sorry.
It's okay.
Tell me again what you're looking for.
Building Bridges, it's called. Super, super simple.
I apologize, I had another one ready, but not that one. So give me just a second.
You got it.
It's the pool report.
Well, when they all have that orange starting screen, sometimes it's hard to figure that out. But I can get started while Andy finds it. And that's basically just to talk about the fact that Building Bridges is a part of our continuum of supports, that thanks to decisions made by this board, we have an increasingly deep, universal structure for students, meaning that all students are getting really excellent supports related to their social, emotional learning. We have our two SEL coaches, we have our school counselors, we have the additional mental health professional that was just added this year, and of course, our school psychologists who are all at 1.0 now. So we have a lot of really strong supports in the universal, including what the classroom teachers are doing with the support of the social, emotional coaches. But as part of that continuum, there you go, Andy, thank you. Next, there you go. As part of that continuum, that's really well-aligned with our values, for the students who, everyone gets the universal supports. Some students receive additional supports in the form of small groups. And then there are some students who need supports that are even more significant than that. And that's really where Building Bridges is a really important resource and partnership for us. Next one.
So some of you might remember that when we first started with Building Bridges, it was just a pilot program with three Dade County schools. And a year, a couple of years into that, there was quite a bit of excitement. And the county put forth some additional funding and added some more schools. And as Brian said, we've had Building Bridges now for two years. So among this group of school districts and the schools within them, Building Bridges is 4K through eighth grade. So among this group of schools, Building Bridges has had referrals from 90 schools and has reached 272 students within the last year. So that's a quite a lot of impact that the county is partnering with us to, to make that kind of a difference with our students. So Oregon has had referrals from each of our elementary schools, Rome Corners and the middle school, and we've also had some 4K referrals. And so we've, we've been able to impact 48 students and their families. Next one. So the focus of Building Bridges is really to work with staff and families to connect students with resources that are to, to address unmet needs that they may have in the mental health area. It's a short-term 90-day program, and it's designed to increase those proactive strategies for students to stressors and to connect schools and families. Kind of going crazy on the other hand.
Where do you want to be?
Right there. And to increase our own capacity as a school staff to understand the things that are happening with our students. So again, we have two mental health providers from Catholic Charities hires them, and we partner with the county to, to fund those services. And they serve up to 12 students per semester. And again, we have been able to, even if we have had families who haven't gone entirely through the program, we've been able to replace them. So we've always been at our maximum number of students available per semester. Some of the measures that we have to look at whether or not we are making a difference are these measures. 88 and 87% of our student services plans have been met. In addition to that, there are surveys that are sent to staff and to families at the end of the 90 days. In addition, parents are provided with rating scales at intake, at the end of the 90 days, and at a six-month follow-up. So we have follow-up with families at six months for Building Bridges. We also take attendance data, and we take them for all of the students involved, whether or not attendance was necessarily a part of their plan. And I would say that in terms of, not quite there. Thanks, though. So some of our staff have reported that they, like last year, at the end of the year, 85% of our staff reported an increased understanding of the mental health issues that the students were, were experiencing. They reported 85% increase in parent involvement. 93% reported that they felt that there was a team approach to coordinating services for students rather than having, you know, to go to this person and this person and this person. And 94%- And 94% of our staff reported satisfaction with Building Bridges. That was a little bit higher for our parents' staff, our parents who were working with Bridges and they were at 95 and 96% feeling like the program was beneficial to them, feeling satisfaction with it and just in, in general, an excellence of the program. So, now you can go. So, in addition to that, we have some anecdotal evidence from both of those surveys, staff and family surveys. So, some of the things that the parents appreciated were that ability to have that additional focus on them, someone who's listening to their, their needs and what they, what they need to do to help their child, advocating for their students at school and having someone to help them navigate those resources that can be challenging for all of us at times. And so, I like the one on the bottom in particular. That's a pretty strong statement in support of what, what that particular family thought that Bridges was doing to help them. And then our school staff also felt like we had a pretty dedicated and committed couple of individuals working through Bridges and perseverance and, and just in general, their communication styles and their flexibility such that they were able to meet with staff when it was convenient for staff as well. So, another positive for our Building Bridges staff.
One of them is with us today.
So, we have questions for her.
I can switch places where.
So, as we close out our presentation, one of the things, to the next one. One of the things that we want to continue to do, and as Steve mentioned, the importance of the relationships. Some of the things that Naomi and Nora are going to do this year are continuing that professional development and we're going to reach out to Jackie and try to get on the 4K agenda so that we can be, starting with our earliest learners and educators. We're going to continue to work with the relationships that we have with our providers that come into the school, Oregon Mental Health and Lake City Counseling. We will continue to work on those interventions and, and professional development specific to the teams and classroom teachers that are working with the kids. And, and then finally, one of the things that we talked about also was to partner with our own student services staff and work on those strategies for compassionate teachers so that we make sure that we're meeting the needs of teachers as well and preventing some of that burnout that happens when people are working with really challenging behaviors. Any questions for either of us? Or Leslie?
So, I'm guessing that this question or this issue's been discussed before, but I just want to make sure I understand the difference between how a student or when a student is connected to a counselor versus a social worker through the Building Bridges program?
So, as a student services staff, we get together and we talk about the students whose needs we haven't been able to meet for whatever reason they are. And then we generate that list of people who we think are going to be good candidates for Building Bridges to work with. They have a lot more ability to, to get to those family issues and to help those families get connected than we do in some of our more school-oriented roles.
So, a student, let's say they enter or begin working with Building Bridges at 4K, is that something that stays with them just for that school year or can they progress, continue working with Building Bridges as they go to first or second grade?
So, they, it's a 90-day program, so they do follow-up at six months. In terms of repeat referrals, generally speaking, something would need to change within the family dynamics, otherwise they're sort of done and they're kind of handing them back to us to, to continue with whatever has been established for them. So, something like a death in the family or a significant stressor or something like that might happen that we would say, we really would like Bridges staff to stay involved for another 90 days. But generally, otherwise, there would be probably a gap in service, like if, if they saw somebody two years ago, maybe they would come up again. But in order to continue to, to kind of do that short-term care and to reach as many students as possible, we kind of have some kind of minor rules around repeat referrals.
And then who sets the number of 12? Is it based on caseload that two people can handle or is that a county?
Yeah, it's set from the county and Catholic Charities in terms of what, what's reasonable to expect for a caseload and that's through all the schools that are in the program.
Okay, last question, sorry. And then for our ninth through 12th graders, Building Bridges is not available to them. So, what are, is there something that we do that is similar to Building Bridges or is that a gap that we have in this district for ninth through 12th graders?
I would say Building Bridges isn't specifically involved for that, but we did add the mental health counselor this year to hopefully address some of the gap that we had at the high school, which we think was somewhat related to returners from hospitalization and, and mental, you know, illness breaks from school, that kind of thing. So, I think we're addressing it differently, not through Bridges. The other thing that we're, we're working through this year is a greater presence of CBITS, which is the screener that we're going to try to do for all 10th graders instead of a targeted population this year. So, we definitely don't have Bridges at the high school level, but we're hopefully getting that, some of those other mental health needs in a different way.
Tim, do you have a question?
You mentioned that we had 48 referrals this past year and that the total program...
Two years.
Two years?
Yeah.
Okay. And that the total program had how many referrals? Across the county?
Well, they worked with 90, 90 schools and so 272, I think, was the number of students that I said had been through Bridges last year.
Okay. And so, and 48 of them over the last two years came from us. Is that about, we have more challenging behaviors here? Is it about greater familiarity with the program and, and how to better access the program just because we have more experience? Because we're using about 20% of those students, about 20% of those students are represented by Oregon students.
So, it's 24. So, in a year, we just did 24.
Okay.
So, it's 12 per semester. So, the 48 is for the two years that we've been working with Bridges.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, I misled on that.
And I noticed that the list has grown significantly of the different districts that are accessing the program. Are we, and we have the two of you working with us now. Is that, are we capped out as to how many more of you we have access to? Is that a, an allocation on a per-district basis?
It is. It's a, it's a kind of a two-for-one deal. So, the county provides for one position and we provide for the other. So, it's sort of, that's the way the program is set up. It's to be two people, one funded by the district and one funded by the county.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Given the popularity of the program amongst various school districts or county schools, Six, do you anticipate that the county's going to maintain that program?
I do think so. I think that the, the schools that are not participating are probably because they're small. So, you saw in the list of schools that Middleton and Wisconsin Heights are combined. So, I think if they wanted to, if some of the smaller districts wanted to, to be included, we maybe would look at, at how some of the larger districts could partner with them to help them out.
And is that an annual decision-making process on the part of the county and its budget?
Yes.
Okay. Does that coincide with our school year budget and how staff, well, we're going to be a year ahead or a year behind potentially if they...
The county is January through December.
Okay.
So, we're all, we're always a little bit off schedule with them, but we budgeted for this, for this full year.
Brian?
The Dane County Executive, Joe Perisi, meets periodically with the Dane County superintendents and this is a important talking point that we both have or that all the Dane County schools have with Executive Perisi. And in, in a nutshell, Building Bridges works. And we have a program that works, we want to support it, we want to invest in it and we want it to continue. That's why that list of districts that Candace put together has almost doubled in just a short period of time. Our anticipation, we, we want to, we want this to continue and the unofficial word that we've received from Dane County is it's a priority from them. And to the extent that they can make it happen in their succeeding budgets, they are going to do that. So, that's great news for us. I couldn't be happier that we have the Building Bridges program.
Any questions, Courtney, Troy?
Dr. Wyans, you, you mentioned that there's resources for staff through Building Bridges and my assumption would be that doesn't count against our 12 per semester. So, I guess how would that, how would those resources be initiated? Is it usually through a particular student who's receiving services that the staff is supplemented with that or is there an opportunity for staff who just needs, just having, you know, just in need of mental health support that they could come to the Building Bridges program?
Well, I would say that in terms of resources to staff, it's, it's a lot of resources through understanding the student, helping with the behavioral challenges, the, the things that Bridges can provide the families to support the students in, in their behavioral needs and getting those met. So, so more PD for staff and more support for those behavioral plans.
Anything?
No, I just think what a great program, thank you for that update.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are you Naomi?
I am Naomi.
Thank you so much for being in our district and helping our students.
Doing all the talking.
Thank you. That takes us to E5, it's our pool usage report. I know we have a PowerPoint on that. It's orange, yes. So, we get that up?
Yes, we do. Just a little background as Erica comes forward, she's been doing some work with Deb on that. And I asked them to refresh the information that we provided to you this last spring, I believe. And this was something that we intended to have on the August agenda, but I missed it. So, here we are tonight. And so, we have an update on the pool usage information, another thing, just to dust your memory off a little bit. We've had a couple of meetings with the swim parent group and Doug Cena is one of the contacts I think some of you may know Doug. He's a community member and has two daughters in the, in the swim program. It's been a while since I've touched bases with him. I don't think I've talked to him since May of this last year. So, something you might ask us to do is reach out to them. Now that the school year is up and operating, we could certainly do that. And I will turn it over to Erica to refresh our memory on the pool use report.
Sure. So, Andy, you can advance the slide. No, no, no. Oh, there, there, okay. So, this is just, this is a one-slide report here and what we've done is summarized the numbers for average use hours per month at the pool and did a comparison for the different group, group categories that use the pool comparing 2018 to 2019. So, on the left-hand side, those numbers are for the full year because that's what came into the pool for the year. But then, we have to remember that in 2019, there was some repair work going on in March and the pool was shut down for about three weeks in April due to some water issues. So, it's not a, it's not a fair comparison to look at the whole year. So, on the, on the next column, we created a comparison, taking those two months, two months out, thinking that would be a better comparison. And really, the bottom line is it's, it's pretty similar from 2018 to 2019.
Why do the numbers go up?
Which numbers on?
In the community, in the community 2018 column, if we minus March and April, the...
So, it's averages, it's average use. And March, I would say is historically a little bit lower use per average because you've got spring break in there. So, when you take that out and we're looking at the average.
Oh, okay.
So, how many people is this? I mean, you know hours, but I guess I'm just looking for volume.
Capacity.
Yeah, because I think we're trying to get at capacity in terms of, I, I, this means one thing to me, but I think we also need to know volume. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
How many people per, per, or...
Well, we do have, were you gonna say something?
You're gonna hand out the spreadsheet?
We have, so this is a lot of detail, so I was gonna hand it out. Yeah, please. There you go. Can I actually grab mine too quick? And Deb can certainly answer some of these detailed questions better than I.
All right, so this is just pool usage and that is all that we were, we were coming to with today. If you would like to have numbers of how many people are coming into the pool, I can have my staff start collating some of that information on how many people have used the pool this year or last year, or if you want both, what would you like?
I guess, you know, one of the, some of the things that we've heard in terms of is there not enough capacity in the pool for the people that want to use it? And do we need to include a second pool in the new middle school potentially? So, I guess, so I'm just looking from a sense of, okay, let's take last one, which I do at 5:30 in the morning. So, we have a certain number of lanes, you can fit certain other people in the lanes. Do we have enough pool space to accommodate the demand?
Okay.
So, I guess, I, I guess, you know, your family's swimmers, Troy, so you can probably speak to it better than I.
Yeah, I mean, use by hour, one thing I would be interested in is some of our younger swimmers who are in club swim is what, you know, how late into the evening are they forced to have their activities? We would like to have our kids home at reasonable hours and...
Yeah.
So, I think some of that data would be helpful to understand just how...
Part of that is also the club. I can't dictate what the club decides their, their age children come in. Two, we have given them time between the three to six time, the three to seven, but they now have three to nine to take that time and, and choose to put what grades, what levels that they have coaches for. So, that's a little out of our perspective, but I can certainly tell you what they have right now and what they're doing.
Yeah, I mean, I think, just from a perspective, it's a community club or a community or for student enrollment's growing, so we would sort of hypothesize that the club's enrollment's going to grow as we grow as a community.
They, they cut enrollment this year because they could not accommodate the amount of children that wanted to swim to the amount of space that we had. I can tell you right now, the class that I have from 3:15 to four, I have three lanes and I have 28 children in there. That's a lot of children in three lanes. I know they're smaller bodies, but it's still a lot of children in three lanes.
And so, this information will tell us that, that, that three to four time slot is accounted for in the hours per month of use?
Yes.
But it doesn't, it does...
Doesn't tell you how many people...
It would be helpful to understand that there are 28 people in that hour as opposed to six.
Yes. I can pull OCSE hour, our attendance records to tell you how many people that they have. Also, OHS High School to get that in there also compared to what we have also community.
Deb, can you just refresh everyone's memory?
Everybody, can you remind, to get, put on your mic so that we can pick up?
Deb, would you remind everyone, the pool opens at X-time and a typical day looks like this. And then factor in the school uses, you know, during the school year and then the athletic use with fall, girls swimming, sort of winter, spring-ish, boys swimming. And then as board members, is you, here's one way that I look at the data. I don't think it's perfect, but the greatest use of our pool is what? The community. And the second biggest use is our, our swim team. I am interpreting swim team to be our community swim team.
Correct.
And then physical education classes, that's what I would describe as the school use during the day. And then swimming lessons.
Community lessons.
That's, that's community lessons and/or young people lessons.
And adults.
Uh, either before or after school. And then athletic, I'm interpreting that as the girls swim program that's part of the high school and a boys swim program.
Yep, and cross-country and some of those that use.
And the cross trainers.
Yes, the cross trainers. That are in there.
So could you just walk the board through?
Sure.
What time we open and what time we close?
So like today, uh, it's a Monday. We opened up at five thirty this morning. We had lap swim from five thirty AM to seven forty-five AM. Then at eight o'clock, we started with our special education, um, classes and fi- physical education classes until eleven thirty. At eleven thirty, we had water exercise till twelve thirty. Twelve thirty until three o'clock, we had, uh, physical education classes again. At three o'clock to four o'clock, we had our younger children that were coming right out of elementary for OCSE swim club. From four to six, we had the well and six lanes going with high school OCSE splitting the pool. And then at six o'clock, uh, six o'clock, we split the pool. Our, today is our first day of the new configuration of the pool. So at six o'clock today, we had, uh, three lanes, OCSE in the well, two lanes of lap swim in the well. And in the shallow end, we had four teachers teaching lessons. Then at seven o'clock, half of the pool was at open swim and the other half was at swimming lessons. And at eight o'clock right now, we should be switching over from lessons and half of the pool and lap swim from, uh, the other half of the pool from eight to nine. And at nine, nine fifteen, everyone's out of the locker rooms and hopefully my staff is locking up the doors. So that's a typical Monday. Typical Wednesday looks just like that. And Friday is a little different because we do not have lessons. So what happens is from four to six, it's high school alone. And then from six until nine PM is OCSE. And again, we close again at nine o'clock.
So what I've heard so far from board members, and everyone can edit my thinking and provide more information, what you would like to see is sort of that school schedule or, or the, the pool's schedule from beginning to end. I'll say from a Monday through Sunday. Uh, also a highlight on when our swim team practices and completes their end-of-the-year day. And then to the extent that we can do this, provide you with, I'll let you know the secret. We're over capacity. Uh, how we would measure being at full capacity or overcapacity at, at the pool? Am I, did I hear everything right?
The question we're going to have to answer within two years is when we start looking at a building project over on the Donson property or six, seven and eight building, is there a capacity issue at our current pool that will require us to look at building another pool over there? And how do we show that? Okay, what's the relevant data? You know, if we would, if we would have more capacity, does that enable us to serve more people? And at the present time, given our current capacity, are we not serving people that we could serve that want to, but we just don't have space for it? And that's the data source we got, gotta have. And, okay, everybody jumped and, um, Courtney.
Well, I was just going to ask, or I'm going to assume that there are probably guidelines, whether they're from DPI or other entities that say if you have a four thousand student school district, you ought to have X number of square feet of swimming pool. I, I'm guessing somewhere there is some guideline, standard for that because there is for, there, for other parts of school construction, gymnasiums, um, cafeterias, et cetera. So that might be a good starting place or at least a, something that might be helpful to consider.
Krista?
I think one other thing we have to think about is that we have a value of experiential equity. And so I think we also need to think about what are the things we want to provide that we currently don't provide in terms of open swim. I know we do a lot of open swim, but things that we could do for students in a pool. And I would say that we probably need to start doing this information for our gyms as well. That as we look at building a new school, I had a meeting last week as friends of Oregon School District with Amy Miller about do we have enough gym space for what we would, used to do as we were kids is just have free ball or have kids come into a gym and play. And so I really want us to think about experiential equity when we look at the pool and we look at gyms and we look at this new middle school, that we really have to get out of this traditional organized team and think about what we need to provide to our students that's educational, that happens in a gym and happens in a pool. So I think we have to think bigger than just what we currently are doing. And I know, you know, Deb and Mike feel that way as well, but I really would encourage the board to think bigger about what we should be doing, not only what we could be doing.
Related to that is, well, I'm a huge fan of people learning how to swim. And I think something I hope we'll be looking at, or this board will be looking at, is are we providing enough hours for instruction for our PE classes? Because it is on the equity issue. It's a great way for children whose families may not be able to afford lessons to, to get swimming lessons, uh, as well as it's just a fantastic way for kids to exercise.
Anybody else want to weigh on data on that wiki or considerations?
I just had one question. Deb, you said today was the first day with the new revised configuration. Do you have any thoughts? Is that going to be very helpful, a little bit helpful, not have much of an impact?
Right now it's helping OCSE get, be able to have more time in the pool on Monday and Wednesday where they were not allowed to be in there because of the amount of swimming lessons and how we had the pool configured before. Um, so I think it's going to help some of our community swim club, yes. Um, I, until we, I, I see some data and see how this works and how, how the community feels about it, I, I really can't answer much more than that.
Thank you. Thank you. Brian and I are gonna kind of put our heads together when we meet, uh, and kind of figure out a path forward and how to get data to analyze this. Thanks for coming.
All right, superintendent's report, Brian.
Oh my goodness, you've heard a lot from me tonight. Uh, I'll try to make this short. Again, the two thousand and nineteen, uh, school opening was smooth. A little rainy on the first day, but a very smooth opening. Board members, you're aware that this Wednesday night, the Dane County Equity Training Session for School Board Members is five thirty to nine PM, nine PM at the Manona Grove District Office, which is right on Manona Drive. If we haven't sent you the address, uh, tomorrow morning, we will send you the address, uh, one more time. Uh, and also an update for you. We have a meeting planned with the Village of Oregon on September six, sixteen to continue a discussion on the SRO agreement. I know that you already know this, but it bears repeating. Since the beginning of the school year, we've had a retired Dane County Deputy, Ishmael Sanchez, and he's providing our onsite security at Oregon High School. And of course, the Oregon PD, just like the Oregon Fire and Ambulance, respond to calls that the district makes throughout the day. Ideally, we try to make as few calls as possible, but occasionally we have that need to make that type of call. Uh, also, this is, uh, you know, a busy time of the school year. There's lots of exciting activities within the district. It's a great time to have our schools filled with students again. But, uh, our students are learning, they're growing, they're achieving. We have parents connected to our schools, uh, visiting. We, the, last week, we had, we had ten new students registered in the middle of, on the last Wednesday, which is amazing uh, to me. And I think we're going to have that trend continue. Uh, as you heard from Andy tonight, our annual operating budget is in terrific shape. Um, I, I'll give you a lens to look at tertiary aid. It's an equity formula. And the whole idea of tertiary aid, I don't know who came up with that phrase. Uh, I'd call it third-tier aid. But the whole idea is if a district, and I'll insert Oregon, has over the state average of funding support, it makes sense for us to have less state support because our property taxes can pay for our budget. And on, and said another way, another public school district that doesn't have the property values that we have should have access to additional state funding. So while we prefer to never be in third-level aid, you're in third-level aid when you are a district that has high property values. And certainly just by our zip code in Dane County, we are one of the last districts to enter into that. Now, that will shift and change a little bit with our student enrollment, but the, the tertiary aid or third-level aid really is an equity provision. And it's, and it's a way to make the playing field level and square for all public schools in Wisconsin. So while we love state aid, there's other districts that need it more than us. So with that, I will stop. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I, I hope, I know many of you have had an opportunity to, like Anna did tonight, to go to an open house and we are busy interacting with our parents and we want our parents in schools as often as possible. And we'll continue to do that throughout the school year. So do you have any questions for me?
Seeing none, we'll move to closing. Future agenda, we've got that all established with our annual meeting in two weeks. So that said, if there's anything you'd like us to consider for our October, it's hard to believe we're going to be in October
Yikes.
pretty soon. For that agenda, uh, let Brian or me know, okay? That takes us to checkout. Are there anything? Tim?
Nothing.
Krista?
No.
Courtney?
Nope.
Troy? Anna?
Just a, just a quick note about the, um, back-to-school night. It was, uh, really great to be at the, the middle school. They had the food trucks there in the parking lot, so people could order dinner and they had the Kona ice truck, which was very popular. It's a big long line. Um, but no, it was, uh, just really a fun event and I love going to those. It was a really great way to kick off the school year.
Great.
I don't have anything other than I forgot to talk about our donations when we were doing the, um, consent calendar. So I always like to make sure we publicize people who have contributed to our district and, uh, we've approved donations from Cutting Edge here. They donated thirty-three plus backpacks for our students. Oregon Youth Football donated three thousand dollars for program support. Holy Mother Consolation Church donated school supplies to our students. Oregon Manor donated two hundred dollars for the splash pad. And then Frank and Mary Graziano donated a thousand dollars for our splash pad and the donation. So we appreciate those donations and all the folks who contribute above and beyond for the success of our district. And I don't have anything further because I talked a long time at the beginning of the meeting. With that, I would entertain another motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. We're adjourned at eight eleven. Thanks, everyone. We'll see you at the annual meeting.